The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortmann. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman French. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Williamson. Nineteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend Janell Callaway from Trinity Mark Carmel Baptist Church. And I tell you, I am so honored to have Reverend Callaway here today. Been wanting to get her here for a long time to say the prayer, and you probably recognize that last name. She is no other than the mother to Don Callaway, former state representative.
Good morning to you all. Before we begin, let us take a moment of silence concerning the passing of Lou Father Times and lift his family in prayer. Our Lord and our God, how excellent you are in all the earth. We thank you Heavenly Father for this aldermatic board that has been called by the people to serve your people. We thank you for the creative power that you have given each of them to sit at the table and work out solutions to our problems in our city. Lord, we thank you that you have given them some synergy, some understanding and some know-how to appreciate their calling and to know that what they are charged to do is ministry to this city. Now, Lord, we understand that there are things that we cannot do. And when we have come to our extreme, our finiteness, we call on your infiniteness, your wisdom, oh God, to help us blaze the trail. Lord, we still have a homeless population in this city, those who don't have a pillar to lay their head on. We ask, oh God, that you would find for them a home. Lord, there is unemployment, those who don't earn a living wage. We know that you are the source of our resources, so we trust you, oh God, to open up the coffers that money will be found to employ everybody. Lord, we have a school system that is not accredited in the way that it should be. We have children going to school every day who fear learning because it's not popular to be smart. And we have those who fear for their safety, parents as well, who send their children off to school not knowing whether they will return in one piece. But Lord, you are in charge of all of that, so we ask that you will bring a calmness to our hearts and stop the violence. Oh God, as we face these challenges, we know that we cannot make it without you. And for that reason, we don't find ourselves in a valley of dry bones, because we have hope in you. We will never give up hope, because this city shall rise again, and it shall be that beacon on a hill that you have declared will be a light that will never go dim. Lord, we ask that there will be companies that will knock on our door saying, "Let me in, because I want to be a part of the city of St. Louis." Lord, we ask now that you will enlighten our understanding, increase our energy, infuse us with your wisdom, that as we go forward from day to day, we can somehow know that we are one city for all the people, all of your people. Lord, I ask that while we are elected to represent the north side, the south side, the central corridor, that we will remember that we are one city, and without the parts, we cannot be a whole. But if we continue to segment ourselves with the rhetoric of separation, we can never bond together in the unity that you intend. So unify also, Lord, in our speech, in our actions, and in our daily walk, that as we come together as this legislative body, we will remember that what we are doing is for the greater good, and it is to honor you and to bless you in all our ways. We thank you, oh God, for everybody that will put their foot to the plow, put their hand to the plow, and go about doing what you have called them to do. We thank you, oh God, we bless your name, and we honor you today, in the name of our Lord Jesus. Amen.
Let's give Reverend Callaway a round of applause, thank her for such a great prayer. To dispense with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution count, I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution count, I entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the ninth, Alderwoman from the fifteenth, would you like to approach the dials?
We're here to celebrate the retirement of Joe Thiele. Joe has worked tirelessly for the city for many years, and he has worked tirelessly to improve the quality of life in all of our neighborhoods. I consider Joe a friend and a neighbor, and so with that, I'm going to read this resolution. Whereas we have been apprised that after many years of dedicated service to the city of St. Louis, Joe Thiele will retire on June 13th, 2014, and whereas Joe is a 1969 high school graduate of St. Thomas Aquinas High School in Florissant, and a class of 1980 Kenrick Glennon Seminary graduate, with a BA in Philosophy, and class of 1985 Kenrick Glennon Seminary graduate with a Master of Divinity. And whereas Joe was the program monitor for the Cardinal Ritter Senior Services and has worked for the city of St. Louis since June 1988. And whereas he volunteered with Big Brothers Association and has enjoyed restoring his Tower Grove Heights home, and whereas Joe is a member of the Vintage Volkswagen Club of America and loves his VW Bug, and whereas Joe plays the Grinch for the annual South Grand Christmas Celebration fundraiser, and whereas he is an avid bike rider and makes a wicked margarita, and whereas Joe loves to travel, his favorite destinations are New Orleans and Colorado, and whereas we are certain Joe is looking forward to a well-deserved retirement with his family and his many friends. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate Joe Thiele for his many years of service with the city of St. Louis, and we wish him peace and happiness in his retirement, and we redirect this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings. So, having said that, Joe Thiele, we wish you a happy, happy, much deserved retirement, and I am going to miss you, friend.
Appreciate that.
I am.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth?
Well, I didn't know that you had a Doctor of Divinity, Master of Divinity, Master of Divinity, so you've been praying for us all this time, and I hope you will continue to do that. I remember when Joe brought his VW Bug, and we were trying to get the businesses on Morgan Ford organized, and he took a lot of effort and time with an alderman who was not quite familiar with that area, but we wanted to make a difference there. So I appreciate that effort, and I appreciate all the efforts that you have made ever since. Thank you.
All along from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Joe, thank you so much for your many years of service, and I wish you nothing but the very best in retirement. I have no idea what you're going to do with all your time now that you, but I think you'll figure it out. So, thank you for your service, thank you for helping me with many things in the twenty-eighth ward, and enjoy your retirement. I hope we still get to see you around. Thanks.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Joe, I've had the pleasure of working with you for the last, you know, six years, basically, since I got elected, and, you know, I gotta say, when I first got elected, you know, the neighborhood, it was just kind of all over the place, and, you know, you really kind of helped partner with me and figured things out to, you know, help get us, you know, going in the right direction. And I gotta tell you that, you know, I really appreciate that, and I can speak on behalf of many of my neighbors who have, you know, worked with, you know, various people from your office over the years, and they, you know, really appreciate your leadership as well. From every neighborhood meeting that I go to, you know, there's always a response, you know, from your office, and just what you've been able to do with that office and the time that you've been there has been remarkable, you know, at least the contrast from when I first came down here to today. And, you know, your leadership will be greatly missed, and thank you for everything you've done.
Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, members of the board, we're gonna miss Joe, because I hardly think there passed a week, well, I did at least call him three or four times, and he's been one of the most responsive city employees that I've ever had a chance to meet, and I've been down here longer than everybody else, I believe. But Joe has really been there, my ward looks better because of him, he's been so responsive, he has never, 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 as long as I've been calling him over 20 years, been non-responsive, been rude, got me off the telephone in a big hurry, usually he asks, is that all? Because I really have a lot to talk about whenever I do call him. So I just tell you, we appreciate you, Joe, you've done a tremendous job, particularly in the third ward, I don't know what time you've had left for other person, so I'm sure I worry out.
All along from the first.
President, members of the board, Joe, you and I go way back, it seems like Pearlene Hawkins or someone should be here. Most of the people don't know that we didn't always have 28 NISs or NSOs, because we've been through a lot of transitions of what they're called, but I guess I've known you for 22, 23 years, and I want to echo what the alderman from the third says, is that you have always been the person that you could call, talk to, even before you were the supervisor, if you had ideas. You are not only the person who is willing to supervise, you're actually willing to get out there. One of my things that gets on my nerves are those signage in the right of ways, I hate them, and so Joe has one of these little things that you use to get the cans down from the top of your shelves. He goes out there with that to pull signs down, so he's hands-on as well as an administrator, and I don't believe that people who work like you retire really. You just go into a different phase of your life, but I'm sure whatever you do after this, you will be doing it with the same enthusiasm and the same good faith and the same hard work that you put to being a representative of the city, and your neighborhood is probably going to be all the more richer for it, because now you don't have to spread your talents city-wide, you can concentrate on a neighborhood. So I want to say to the people who live on the block that Joe lives on, you better be careful now, because he'll be that person walking up and down the street telling you, you need to put your signs down, you need to put your numbers on your garage, or here's something that you didn't know, but that'll be, they'll make your block all the more better, and I look forward to working with you in a non-working capacity in the city, because as a citizen of the city of St. Louis, I believe that if we even called on you now, that you would respond, and thank you for all your years of service, we appreciate it.
All along from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Well, congratulations, Joe. I remember when you first came, you didn't think you'd make it this long, did you? But you give one of those things that I like, and I talk about it when I like people. You know, you understand that it's about the people in the community, and we've done some crazy things in, back in the day, to make sure that everybody was happy, and that's what it takes. So I know in your retirement years, as the alderwoman from the first ward said, you've got more time and you got unlimited vision and opportunity without restraints, so look out, folks. Congratulations.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Further discussion? Also want to add my thanks, and also congratulations on the job well done, Joe. I think you heard it here today, all along from the seventh ward.
I think I need to stand and say, thanks, Joe. When Joe came, I believe CONSERVE program was in place, and so there was Joe Thiele, and there was a woman named Mary Vita Rose Marino, and Frank Oswald, Shelley Finn, who's now gone on through the police department, Frank Oswald's gone to the building commissioner, Mary Hart's now the zoning commissioner, so all these people have moved up the ladder. And Joe's the first one that I recall is going out the door and retiring. Joe has been, as everybody's noted, very effective in his role, both as a conserve officer and through the past years, and most of you don't know, but he has also been a very good McGruff the Crime Dog in the Mardi Gras parade. So he fills all kinds of shoes, and he will be sorely missed. Best wishes to you.
Alderman from the ninth.
I guess what I can actually say is thank you, anything else would be rated, so, you know, but I'm gonna point out one, one thing about what Joe's always done, what you've always done, is you've always been very accessible, you know, and the one thing I appreciate is when you get that phone call, you know, if you can't answer your phone, as soon as you see it, you call back, which is really important, because a lot of times when we're looking for you, it's because we need you. So, and I think that's something, you know, that I really push far as customer service, and that's what I call it, and I don't think you'll ever change. Are you keeping the same phone number? Thank you. Thanks again, Joe.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Further discussion? Well, Joe, as I was saying earlier, you know, from my family and friends and other people who cannot be here today, I want to say thank you for a job well done. You know, I come from a long line of people who answered the call in to ministry, so I understand, you know, what the road that you've taken, going through divinity school and everything else, and the calling that you answered by coming to the city of St. Louis and playing this role, because you have helped people, you've helped the better lives of people all throughout this city, and it has made a tremendous difference, and that's why you will be missed. We thank you for your time, the time that we have had with you, and we look forward to working with you again in the future on other projects, other things, even when you be, even when you're the Grinch during Christmas, so you even make a nice Grinch during Christmas, if you guys imagine that. But thanks again, Joe, for a job well done, and enjoy your retirement.
This is, this is a bit odd, but very briefly, I walked, in 1988, I started working for the city. I could have worked for the Jesuits, or I could have come to the city. I came here, I did enough church stuff, but I walked in here in awe, and I was assigned to four wards, two south, two north, I lived north. I was, I had alderman, alderwoman Mary Ross, I had Jim Signagel, I had David Kneely, who I really never saw, if anyone's been around a long time, and a very young and upcoming alderwoman called Phyllis Young, I think she was 10 at the time, but I started out that way, and that was actually in Allo and in CONSERVE, and then since, it's been interesting, it's been challenging, ups and downs, always interesting, but always an honor. So it has been an honor, and I appreciate all of you and the work you do, and, you know, it's a big job, so I know the city's going in the right direction though, so.
And Joe did say he's going to stay throughout the meeting, and then he's gonna take a, Joe, we're gonna take another picture at the, at the end of the board with all the aldermen who would like to be part of. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution count, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. All along from the first.
So, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce Ms. Dottie Pennington, who I've known since she's been a young female, I won't say a young girl, who is the customer service manager at Citizen Service Bureau, and also a resident of the first ward in my neighbor.
All along from the thirteenth.
Members of the board, I would like to introduce as my honored guest Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office, and her intern Portia Britt, who is a student at the University of Missouri in Columbia School of Law.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Would like to have as my special guest, my new intern Ebony Robinson.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome today my constituent Sandy Colvin, who also works in the NSO team.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have as my special guests today, David Holmes with Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and from the carpenters, Keith Taylor, Todd Hake, Jeff Huntz, and Paul Higgins.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Senator Jamila Nashid, who's over on this side of the room, sitting next to Ronnie Hour, my other guest that's every week, and also Brian Williams representing Congressman Clay's office.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I have several honored guests this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, and Mr. Percy Green III with Fire.
All along from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Today as my special guest, I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe Thiele, Neighborhood Stabilization Supervisor, 15th Ward Resident, Sandy Colvin, I know she's been announced from Neighborhood Stabilization, Dottie Pennington from CSB, and our building commissioner Frank Oswald. Thank you.
All along from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have for my special guest Demetrius Al Alfred from the International Firefighters Union, local 73, that resides in the beautiful 14th ward.
Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, I'd like to have as my special guest today Senator Jamila Nashid, over there, who's been very, very helpful in the entire city of St. Louis, and particularly in the third ward, and also Charles Kirkwood, who used to be a sergeant in the police department in the city of St. Louis, but was a businessman in the third ward who really made a difference in the area on Grand Avenue and North Florissant. So I'd like to welcome those two as my special guests today.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have a special birthday today, is the birthday of our majority floor leader, Alderman from the seventeenth, Joe Rhodey. Let's give him a round of applause. Happy birthday, Alderman. Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
I didn't think I had to work on my birthday, Mrs. President. I moved that we approved the minutes from our last meeting.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
We dispense with line items seven through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 83, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment establishing and authorizing a public work and improvement program herein entitled, Building and Environment Projects: Security Access System Upgrades at Lambert Airport, and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, that provides for financial incentives for air service at Lambert Airport, determines and finds that it is in the best interest of the city, the airport, and traveling public to encourage service at the airport by new passenger and cargo airlines, and to stimulate service by airlines currently using the airport by the adoption of programs providing for financial incentives for new airlines or new air service at the airport, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 85, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to $2,200,000 of excess money that the city intends to transfer from the airport development fund into the airport contingency fund, further authorizing transfers of funds in the total amount not to exceed $3,204,354 from the airport contingency fund to the airport revenue fund, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 86, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to parking within the 4200 Gibson Residential Park District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking and residential parking zones within the 4200 Gibson Avenue Residential Park District, containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 87, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on Pleasant Street from Carter Northwood Lee to a point adjacent to the city in City Block 1404, 1406 in the city. Board Bill 88, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from J. Industrial to F. Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 3043 for property on, at 7200 through 30 South Broadway, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills 83, 84, and 85, to the Streets Committee, Board Bills 86 and 87, to the Housing Committee, Board Bill 88, that's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, the Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance pertaining to transit sales tax, creating the city tax, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasury to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales taxing to the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One, appropriating $10,074,162, providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July the first, 2014, through June the 30th, 2015, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 60, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax approved by voters, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasury to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales taxing to the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two, appropriating $10,074,162, providing for the payment of such funds during the period July the first, 2014, through June the 30th, 2015, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 61, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $20,153,420, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bay State Development Agency for transportation purposes, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 64, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracchia, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a quick claim deed to AGC of St. Louis Education Foundation for a city-owned property located in City Block 480, which property is known as 1230 Gratton, upon receipt of and in consideration of sum of $150,000, containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
The dispens for line items fourteen through sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills Two, Committee Substitute, 57, 13, 42, 43, 15, 34, 35, 40, 16, 17, 18, 22, 19, 49, 50, 24, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 44, 52, and 53.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracchia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Kusson, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Valmer, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, 24, aye votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the seventeenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. With dispens for line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills Two, Committee Substitute, 57, 13, 42, 43, 15, 34, 35, 40, 16, 17, 18, 22, 19, 49, 50, 24, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 44, 52, and 53.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature here too, to then that these may become law. We're dispensed with 21 and 22 missed lines, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Wednesday, housing meeting at 10, at, Wednesday, housing meeting at 8:30 a.m., 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, Ways and Means Meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, you, um, we already, I think the speaker earlier talked about the father, the fact that Father Lou Times had died. He, he raised his family in what is now called the first ward. Actually, their family home is still in the 5100 block of Lotus, and, um, one of his daughters still lives in the first ward. But the, and I'm really saddened by that, and I extend my condolences to the family. Um, but the other person who I thought that was just really important, that passed away this, this, uh, week, who was an important person to me, was actress Ruby Dean. And I wanted to take a look at, because she and her husband, I gave us for high school and little raps, and, uh, she was always someone who fought for the rights and inclusion of others. And I wanted to read something that Ms. D. said, that I've always taken to heart. Um, and she said that the greatest gift is not being afraid to question. And oftentimes, that's what you have to do when, when there's an inequity or unfairness. You have to question things, you have to challenge things. She and her husband marched with Martin Luther King. Um, they fought for rights of others at a time when they were starting to be successful. She's such a great actress that was in so many movies that are so important, such as Raising in the Sun and others. And they acted together, and the thing that I always admired about both she and her husband, and now I hope they're in heaven looking down on us, is the, how respectful they were of one another, and how they showed us how to be married, and work together, and be a team. And I was just hoping we could have just a moment of silence for Ms. Ruby Dean.
Yes. Would everyone who's able to stand, stand and join us in a moment of silence for actress Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Members of the board, I would just like to let people know that tomorrow is St. Gabriel's Picnic, which is in the sixteenth ward. It's all day. Just come near Francis Park, which is Nottingham and Tam, and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Excellent. Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I hope some of you will join my extremely well-behaved children and me at Compton Hill Water Tower this evening for food trucks, music, and an unparalleled view of St. Louis under the full moon.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
President, members of the board, um, first of all, Happy Father's Day to everybody out there. Um, you guys do an awful lot, and you're responsible for a lot of the development of the children of this world, and that is important. Um, and we appreciate everything that you give and put into your lives and your children's lives. The Transportation Committee meeting will meet on Thursday this coming week. There's three airport bills. Normally, we meet on Tuesday, but it will be on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announce? Alderman from the third.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, we'll have a Streets meeting this Thursday at 11 o'clock, and if anybody would like to have their bill heard at the Streets meeting, I suggest that you contact the President so he can put it in the letter.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. A couple of things that are going on in, uh, the nineteenth ward, I just wanted to remind people of. Circus Flor has still, uh, got two more weeks of operation. I hope you have a chance to, uh, take your family and enjoy it. Also, um, on June 20th, the Salute to Women will take place, uh, on Friday, and as you know, we honor women not only from our city and our region, but internationally as well. And Anna Marie Horstler will be our lifetime achievement honoree, but I hope you have an opportunity to attend. And for those of you who have, uh, and most of us have teenage memories and/or young adult memories of the Whispers, they're celebrating their 50th anniversary. I cannot believe they've been in business that long. But they are quite a group, and, uh, I had a chance to kind of interact with them through my son, and so I really appreciate it and wish them well at this late stage in life. Uh, I wanted to recognize our secretary, Tracy Phillips. Her birthday was Wednesday, June 11th. She's another Gemini. We've got a ton of Geminis here.
And yearly, aren't you, isn't yours coming up?
I'm a Gemini as well. I'm tomorrow.
Okay. Well, happy birthday to you too.
Thank you. And I'd also like to recognize the passing of one of our great musicians from our area here, Tony Simmons. Uh, he's the blind pianist and organist that you see with Denise Times and many others in the area, uh, and he just passed two days ago. Thank you.
Tony was amazing. Any, any further announcements? Any further announcements? We also have with us our license collector. Thank you for joining us today. Appreciate you, Tony. Alderman from the seventeen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Uh, Mr. President, just as a matter of personal privilege, I, I was at the Cortex Board meeting today, so I showed up a couple of minutes late. I just wanted to add my, uh, uh, comments regarding Joe's retirement. Joe started about the time that I did, and, uh, his career was marked by modesty, understatement, and a, a true, um, public servant. For us flamboyant elected types, he always did a wonderful job of making us look good. And Joe, uh, you've had a wonderful career and, uh, have touched and, uh, and made the citizens, many, many citizens in St. Louis' lives a little better for your service, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I apologize for that interjection, but I, I felt it was important. I wanted to make that comment, having showed up a little late. I'd like to move that we excuse the Alder persons from the fourth, fifth, 10th, and 21st ward.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn, uh, until next Friday, June the 20th.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Stand adjourned.